I'd like to call to order the Ventura County Planning Commission. Would you please rise and face the American flag for the pledge?
Place your left hand and right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Malator?
Present.
Commissioner Roduckas?
Here.
Commissioner Westner?
Present.
Commissioner Bartels?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Item number four on our agenda is the public comments section. That's a section available for any member of the public to address the commission that, as long as it's not set forth already on the agenda. Any item received or discussed by the public can only be received under the Brown Act, and if it warrants further agendization, staff will be instructed to do so. Do I have anyone? I still don't have my theme song. Okay. All right. Who wish for? I know. Next time we'll break out the harmonica, I know. All right. Item number five, conditional use permit, case number LU-05-0043. And our case planner today is Halen Alpert.
Good morning, Chairman and commission members.
Good morning.
I'm Halen Alpert. A pleasure to meet you all. Haven't had an opportunity to be here before. And hopefully you won't run me out of the room for this, but do you know why you-
Well, you don't get out of here that easy.
Do you know why you can't tell secrets in the cornfields?
Why's that?
Because there's too many ears.
Whoa. He's caught the flavor of this conversation already.
Okay, so why don't we launch into it? This is the application for a corn maze again. Quickly, I want to give you an overview of the presentation. First, I want to familiarize us with the site location and some of the surrounding areas and its uses, then go over the site plan and some of the proposed operations of the corn maze, and then we'll move on to some of the conditions created by the other agencies and some of the operational characteristics of the corn maze, and then finally end up with staff recommendations. So here you have a picture of the site location. Project site is outlined in red clearly. It's on State Route 23, also known as Chambersburg Road, and south on that road is Grimes Canyon Road. Property is approximately three-quarters of an acre from the intersection of State Route 126, as you can see there, and it is also then in the Fillmore area of interest. This quickly is a general plan map, designation map. You'll see that this property highlighted in tanish is designated agricultural, as are most of the prop- or all the properties surrounding it, and then some open space designation properties to the north. Similarly, here is a zoning map of the same property. This property is designated AE-40, ag-exclusive, and also you'll see about 90 percent of the property is in the MRP's, the Mineral Resource Protection Zone. And then, so this use is defined by the zoning ordinance as ag-promotional use, and quickly I wanted to give you that definition. And ag-promotional uses are uses that promote the Ventura agricultural industry in general and the specific farming operations through educational entertainment activities that do not compromise the agricultural use of the property. So there's the site itself, outlined in yellow. It is a 72-acre parcel, yet the conditional use permit boundary is designed to be 21 acres approximately, and I'll show you a detail of that in just a second. The back section, where you see the agricultural production now, is used primarily for the growing of palms and various other nursery plants. Also, it's worth mentioning that there is an oil CUP present on this parcel. It's CUP 211, established back in the 50s. No activity has taken place regarding that CUP since the 50s, and there are no wells on the property. This property was in an LCA contract up until 1999, so it is no longer in LCA contract or under LCA contract. And again, this is in the city of Fillmore area of interest. They have reviewed the project and do not have any comments, and actually were enthusiastic about the project. There's a zoomed-in detail of the area approximately that the CUP boundary will cover. Okay, quickly, a project description. The maze itself is proposed to be about 9.5 acres, 2.8 acres designated to a pumpkin patch. Two acres are designated as vacant right now for no particular use. There are 10 chemical toilets proposed. Particularly interesting about this is it's only proposed, the request is only that it's open from August 15th until December 1st, so we're talking three and a half months out of the year. It is permitted, or suggested to be permitted, for seven days a week, and the hours are from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Here we have a picture of the site plan. You'll see the maze area here in general. Entrance to the site is gained here, accessed by a 65-foot bridge. Some of the other important characteristics, that there is a 20-foot wide separation distance around the perimeter of the maze itself, so you'll clearly know when one is outside of the maze. So entrance to the maze will take place here, and I'll have a zoomed-in version of the entrance area in just a second. I have this, just for additional visual reference, is a picture of the aerial photography that I showed a moment ago with the site plan laid over it, just to give you a bit more visual reference of where things will be placed on the ground in reality. This is a layout of the westernmost end of that site plan I just showed a second ago. So again, here's the bridge. Traffic will enter here, of course. Traffic will be circulated in a one-way pattern, down and around to ease confrontation. Against this drainage ditch, there are a line or a row of palms to separate the parking lot itself from that drainage ditch. Show you a picture of that in a moment. The center row here will be stakes to delineate that center row, and then also additional staking here to delineate the back end of the parking lot. There are some chalk outlines for handicap parking here, and chalk outlines for the emergency staging area here. Here's the temporary ticket booth I mentioned a moment ago. Give access to the site itself. And there are the 10 porta-potties. There, there. Move on from there. Okay. Also, few elements worth noting is that I did point out that there's a no-smoking area, designated no-smoking area, and no-smoking signs at the request of the Fire Protection District will be placed 100 foot on center around the entire periphery of the maze. And next, we'll move on to the irrigation system outlined for this proposal. There is a four-acre foot reservoir fed by two wells available that supplies adequate fire suppression and also irrigation compatibility. 700 gallons per minute at 20 PSI, which could be ramped up to even higher levels with a pump that can be turned on. And the owners of the property have committed to provide all the water necessary for the growing of the property and also for fire suppression or other emergency situations that may occur. One additional interesting point is that, so these are two-inch hose connections here, but rather than drip tape, these will actually be sprinklers that raise up about a foot or two, so they'll act almost like a sprinkling system in a building to aid in fire suppression. And finally, additional point about irrigation, Fire Protection District is requiring, or they were concerned about the combustibility of the corn. So at the first sign of the corn turning color, combustibility tests will be completed. And the nature of these combustibility tests is actually that they are going to use the test outlined by the Office of the State Fire Marshal for the test that's conducted on Christmas trees that are displayed in public areas. And the daily results of those test logs will be available for the fire protection review at their request. So there's the bridge I mentioned, 65 feet wide. There's a picture from the roadway, so imagine the picture taker standing on State Route 23 and looking into the site. So that's one of the farm access roads that you see the vehicle parked on. And way off in the distance is the back boundary of the corn maze where that separation occurs, where the nursery plants start.
Are you looking towards Fillmore?
No, sir.
That last picture, are you looking towards Fillmore?
No, we're looking, that would be an easterly direction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so here's the line of palms I mentioned that would separate the parking lot from the roadway, and also, more importantly, the drainage ditch that exists there. Just one more picture. Obviously quite flat, no grading's going to take place. Then I want to move on, if we could, to the ages to review and some of the resulting conditions. These are what I see as the most important conditions that were teased out. All parking will be required to occur on-site, so there will be no parking allowed on SR-23. Trash receptacles we've placed throughout the site, both in the parking lot, ticket booth area, as well as in the maze itself. The maze design each year has to be submitted for approval by the planning director as well as the representative of the Fire Protection District, so each year they'll have to submit their layout for approval. As part of this application, there is no food vending allowed of any sort. I know that's different from some of the other, or from the other, corn maze that was approved a few years back, so that's not part of this. There will also be an aggressive dust suppression on the parking lot area, probably through a water truck to keep that dust down. Caltrans has also reviewed this project, and they did not have any comments. Okay. Additional operational measure is that a traffic control plan is required by the Transportation Department as a condition of approval. The details of that traffic control plan will have to be worked out between the applicant and the representative from the Transportation Department, but in general, it should work as a hierarchy depending on need. Firstly, probably typical like construction zone signs warning people at the entrance or that the entrance to the corn maze is coming up. Additional need would be to use some cones to help create a temporary turning lane if needed, and then finally, the applicant would pay for and supply flagmen in the roadway if that was ultimately needed. Encroachment permits will be required for Caltrans if there is a special event. And then water, I actually already mentioned, so there's sufficient water, more than sufficient water for irrigation and fire suppression. The applicant has also submitted, and is part of the approval package, if that is actually done, an emergency operations plan crafted by a maze expert, someone who's been in the maze creation field, designing and both operating for over nine years. Primary elements of that emergency operations plan are how staff will be trained, orientating customers before they enter the maze so they're aware of general rules, and also evacuation procedures in the event of an emergency. And then there's also a detail of the evacuation procedures, and then how fires and medical emergencies will be reported. Some just quick additional notes, no individual can ever be more than 380 feet from the edge of the corn maze, so about 100 yards, so not all that far. And let's not forget that even though you're in a maze, you know, you can always run through the corn rows if need be, if you really need to get out quickly. You're not going to follow the maze, you're just going to get out. Employees, at least some, will be trained in first aid and CPR, and staff will also be uniformed to make them easily recognizable. Finally, I want to move on to the staff recommendations. Firstly, we recommend that you find that it is consistent with the zoning, which is AE in the general plan. Again, I defined an ag-promotional use for you before, and I think this is certainly a use that embodies the spirit of an ag-promotional use. One thing I did want to mention in addition, I forgot before, is that the corn at the end of the season will actually be used for feed, for livestock, so it won't be wasted. Furthermore, moving on, we recommend that you find that this project or application is categorically exempt for three different exemptions that are appropriate. 15-301 applies to existing facilities and applies to the operation, minor alteration and also permitting of mechanical equipment such as the irrigation system and the access roads. 15-303 applies to new construction that would apply to the ticket booth and the chemical toilets. And 15-304 deals with minor alterations to a land and also temporary land uses. Certainly, this is temporary in nature, and there is no permanent effects on the land itself. And again, so this is happening from August 15th to December 1st, and it is not a time specific event, so arrivals will be spread throughout the day, arrivals and departures. So finally, we recommend that you adopt a resolution for the CUP findings and also approve the CUP. And that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you. Before I ask some questions of staff at this point, is there any disclosures by any of the commissioners?
I have nothing to disclose.
I've visited the site.
I have driven by that site a lot of times over the last 27 years, so I'm very familiar with that. Let's go ahead.
I drive by that site at least two times a day.
I'm familiar with the site. I have one question on that. Is that the site that's immediately adjacent to the stables that are up against the riverbed there? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I know what area it's in.
Any other questions of staff? We'll start on the right.
Where will the drinking water come from for these customers?
I think I would defer to the applicant on the exact location of their drinking water facility.
Okay, we'll hold that for you.
Yeah. Because I have another question.
I've got a big pile of questions for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Rick, anything else? Okay, I'm going to throw these out so you have time to work on these while we deal with the applicant. Condition two, which is a ten-year permit, it has been the policy of this commission to allow the applicant to get a second extension of the same time period as long as there's been no problems, hassles, just simply by coming ministerially. I want to know if that's, you specifically did that, or we just didn't put that in? Okay. Condition number nine is the fact, it's been the policy of this commission to require some type of bond, but since there's no real construction here but corn and things like that, what I'm relating to is, and this is for your information, we've had some mining things, other buildings, where if we have to come in and reclaim the property, that kind of thing, we had something to go against. I don't know if that was discussed, or because of the nature of this, you didn't feel it was necessary. Condition 24, you said there would be no food vendors, but you provided for food vendors obtaining a permit. So I don't know if that was for future uses or whatever. Condition 68, all-weather access road driveway suitable for use by 20-ton district vehicles shall be installed. I don't know if the applicant particularly wants to go through that for, so if we can address if the fire department is already happy with what's existing. And then finally, the 80s, the fire department, since there's not going to be a structure, 80, 81, and 84 through 87 all apply to a building. So I don't know if the fire department just wants those in there in case you build a building. So just something for staff to new along while we talk to the applicant, okay? Any further questions? If not, thank you very much. The procedure of the planning commission is open to public hearing. At that time, the applicant speaks. Then any people in favor of the proposal speak. Anybody against the proposal speaks, and the applicant obviously gets the final say before we close the public hearing. Commissioner?
One question. Have you received any other written or any other comments for or against this project since we received the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Stole my question. Okay, thank you. All right, this time, I have no speaker cards in front of me, so therefore I will ask if the applicant wishes to state or for the record.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is, hello.
Hello.
Board, my name is Ralph Stangby. My address is 2085 Lindhurst Avenue in Camrio. Commissioner Malator, I believe that you were either my principal or my vice-principal at Nordhoff High School.
Yes, I was principal there.
And I apologize if I was ever in your office. I don't recall ever being in your office.
I would have remembered if you were in my office.
At this time, I don't, though.
Are you trying to get this commissioner to recuse himself?
So Ralph Stangby, I'm the representative of Colonel Shucks, which is the entity that proposes to build a maze, and my partners, Richard and James Barron of Barron Brothers Nursery, the property owners, actually, so the entity itself would lease the property from Barron Brothers Nursery, but we're working closely together to put the project together. Colonel Shucks, of course, is a new entity, but Barron Brothers Nursery has had a long history of outreach to the community. They've worked with, in the agriculture industry for over a quarter century, and have reached out to the community and particularly its young people. And Colonel Shucks would like to work with Barron Brothers to continue that tradition. The goals of the maze, being an agricultural promotional entity, is to simply provide a good old-fashioned time for families and people to come out and enjoy the country. Another is to provide a safe environment for children at Halloween time to enjoy Halloween. And we're doing the maze in conjunction with the Halloween season, so that's what the dates that we have in there is proposed for that. The pumpkin patch, having a haunted maze, that type of thing. And we can provide a place where parents can bring their children at Halloween time as opposed to them being out on the street door-to-door with traffic and the associated dangers with that. Another goal is to educate the community, particularly schoolchildren, about agriculture in Ventura County, to perpetuate farming in our community, and to create a greater awareness of the urban ag ecosystem that is in our area. Additionally, we would like to generate tourism and visitors to Ventura County. By creating the maze, we can create a unique family activity that people from Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, and Los Angeles County can come to Ventura County and enjoy what we have here. Another goal is that we would like to foster community pride and support local charities and organizations. I mentioned that Barron Brothers Nursery has a history of working with local organizations, and one of the, or two of those is the 4H and the Future Farmers of America organizations. Barron Brothers is well-known for these organizations as they're at the fair auctions every year, supporting their, the animals that they grow. Barron Brothers has purchased quite a bit of these animals in the past to help these children out with their endeavors. And we're proposing to them, all the organizations at the 4H and the FFA that we've worked with in the past, to incorporate them in running the maze. The young adults that, in these organizations, we would like to get them involved in being in and helping to support and run the maze, particularly just being essentially liaisons and actually in the maze, interacting with people, telling them about the maze and whatnot. And so the steps to do that is just essentially build a maze that's safe and fun for people to visit, and with your approval, we will be able to do that. And after that, is just develop a good working relationship with the community and the local businesses, and we propose to do that by keeping it, keeping our environmental impact to a minimum so that the maze brings up a good feeling to the minds of people in the local area. And then to reach out to other Ventura County attractions in the area and see if we could work cooperatively to bring more visitors into Ventura County. And to reach out to local charities and organizations, as I discussed before. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Now we have questions.
You bet. I'm ready.
First question has to do with the water supplied for the customers.
Yes, sir.
Where does that come from?
Right now, what we're proposing, and we've talked to the environmental health about this, is to have a water vending machines there that people can purchase bottled water. In our advertising also, we, on the website and our paper advertising, that we tell people that they should bring cats and water.
I know that the company knows about corn. When I was a young boy, I used to detassel corn going through the cornfields. This corn has to be high in order for it to function as a maze. How high does the corn grow?
Well, our maze consultant, who, and I apologize, he was, he's not able to be here today. He's, actually, it's the height of his season right now in going throughout the country and cutting these corn mazes, but, and I actually don't have a lot of history with corn, but I'm told by him that we can allow people into the maze at 45 days in the growing cycle, which really isn't very tall, so that's essentially, you know, three, four feet tall. So it doesn't have to be, limit your size in order to be in the maze. There's a number of varieties of corn that we're looking at using for the maze. One of those that we're not, we haven't decided on yet, that is a fruitless corn that would minimize the mess associated with the maze. On the downside to that is that we wouldn't be able to use it for feedstock at the end when we're taking the whole thing down. So, but, and so the different varieties will have different heights involved, but essentially we're looking at eight feet tall probably on average. But, so anyways, when people can enter the maze, it would be anywhere from three feet to eight feet tall.
Thank you.
Commissioner, do this.
So how will these vending machines be powered?
Right now, we, there is a high-tension power lines going through the property, but because it's an agricultural property, it's never had a meter on the property. So right now, with the lighting and with the water vending, is we propose to have quiet generators on-site.
How many generators do you think?
At the moment, what we're proposing is, looks like three generators with the, whether light, combination light generators units, the portable type like you'd see Caltrans using on the freeway, and then one generator in conjunction with the ticket booth to run, to recharge our communications equipment, the radios, and to run the vending machine.
And are you familiar with, I think it was in Camrio, where another outfit had the Amazing Maze Maze?
Quite familiar.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it something like that?
It's different in the fact that their maze was quite a bit smaller than what we are looking at, so their emphasis is essentially similar to, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Underwood Farms out in Camrio and Tira Hada, they have a small maze every year, about an acre, but their emphasis is on their vending, their activities associated with it. Ours is on the other end of the spectrum. In the long run, we've tried to leave it open so that we could have some vending out there, but really, we're not, that's not what we're emphasizing in our project, is we're emphasizing the maze itself, being that there's, mazes have not been around this country all that long, probably nine to 10 years, and, but it's gained a lot of popularity throughout the country. And there's many people that travel, will travel hundreds of miles if you put in a challenging big maze, so that's really what we're emphasizing.
So do you have an eye toward the future of having sales of, well, first, food, and then t-shirts and other merchandise?
Well, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say we have an eye, but I've tried to leave that as a possibility for the future, but once again, it's ancillary to what the emphasis of the project really is. And then that, to show you how that, Camrio, the Amazing Maze Maze was, that was really their emphasis. It seemed to me, having been out there-
I bought their stuff.
Did you?
I almost brought it here.
Yeah.
And I had a big complaint about the t-shirts, is because we bought the t-shirts, and my sons thought that, you know, it was a map.
Oh, it didn't work? It didn't go through?
No.
Still on the MTA.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who left at the MTA referral's too old. Okay. Bill?
My mother.
Yes.
Okay. You're talking about relationships, I'm assuming is, what are your current relationships with the Heritage Valley Tourism Bureau? with the Heritage Valley Tourism Bureau, the Fillmore Chamber of Commerce, the 4H, the three or four 4H groups that are resident at the Equestrian Center, Joe Rickards with the Future Farmers? Are those relationships that already exist or that will develop if you get the entitlement?
The 4H and the FFA, we have, like I said, being that Barron Brothers has been at the fair every year, we have established relationships with many of those organizations and we have communicated with them every year prior to the fair. The Chamber of Commerce and the Visitors Bureau, that, those are relationships that will need to be established before the maze is opened.
The bridge got encroachment when it was built.
Yes.
So what additional encroachment are we talking about with Caltrans?
At this time, I believe zero. We're working with, for the traffic management part of it, in the parking lot, United Rental Technologies, they're looking at the project right now and putting together a plan for us to, a traffic management plan. And from what I'm getting from them right now, they don't believe that it's going to be an issue at all. But Haylen touched on the different levels of steps that we can take if the county and our S find that traffic is, traffic management is a problem at all.
Okay. If, the way I read the condition, if you have food vending onsite, it's, you're talking about a catering truck at this point?
Correct. Yeah. With a, well, actually, we're not talking about having food on this onsite at all. So essentially, the first year, I don't believe that we're looking at having food onsite at all. And I don't believe that we would go to try and get a permit of ourself, certainly not in the near future. We would be possibly, first step would be using somebody that has a permit of their own.
The issue for me is that we're talking about a 10-year entitlement with an additional 10 years. I'm concerned about the entitlement, how you operate within, I frankly have no concerns about. I'd like to see that piece of property not be a dust bowl.
Right.
And because it's riverbed land and because it has had some other impacts from water, it has been a real dust problem.
Sure.
With the other ag around it.
Yeah.
The other issue is lighting. We're talking about pole lighting, Caltrans-style lighting.
Yes.
It's very indiscriminate lighting. I guess because this is a temporary use and because it's a constructed use and because you're operating in months when it gets dark quite early, we're talking about a significant amount of light and light wash in an area that is dark right now.
Correct.
The Equestrian Center has focused down lighting. And though there is some bleed, those lights are much more focused to a specific area. They also have those same kinds of operating hours. Not seven days a week, but for the ropers, but roping events that run quite late. Is it possible to have some specific language, or have you talked with the planning department about specific language for lighting awareness, specific to the other residences that are around you that currently go into darkness?
Yes. Haylen and I have had quite a bit of communicate about the lighting itself. We've had, we're also working with the same company that's looking at the traffic plan, United Technologies. And they're, they're coming up with a lighting plan that is going to minimize the light overflowed to the surrounding properties into the highway. And the pole lighting that they're, well, the lighting trailer-type things that they're looking at are directional. So there are four lights that are directional so that we can, we can have some control as to where the spillover goes. Haylen and I have discussed the fact that the lighting out there is really, we need to find a sweet spot in that. It's on one side, if we provide no lighting, then it's not safe for the occupants that are out there. They need to be able to, people in the parking lot need safety, you know, pedestrians in the parking lot, they need the light to keep them safe. We need to light the exits of the maze so people have a destination to go to in dusk or at a dark grade. But on the other end of the spectrum then is too much light, and that's where we're getting a spillover into the neighboring properties and the highway itself. So, and that's really what Haylen and I were talking about is we need to find a nice spot right in the middle that we're not creating a nuisance to the outside environment, but at the same time being responsible for the, for the safety of the people that are in the maze.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. That you're looking for an entitlement and then we'll figure out how to make this project work, which is fine.
Yeah.
That's where we are in this process, it sounds like. That's, which is cool. It's a corn maze. Come on, kids. It's going to grow and if it's going to burn down, you're going to close it.
Yeah. Well, technically, my maze professional says that corn doesn't burn as long as you irrigate it, so I just want to throw that out here.
Well, except the Amazing Maze Maze closed early consistently.
Oh, did?
Yeah. Because it started failing burn tests.
Commissioner Reddick, any questions?
Yeah, a couple. What's Colonel Shucks? I mean, I don't know. Colonel Shucks?
Colonel, like shucking corn and then Colonel of a corn. So it's just a play on the words.
I'm talking about the organization, your organization, your company.
It's an LLC corporation that was formed to do this project.
Okay. I had a couple of questions, concerns, I guess. And it has, since we were talking about lighting, I think we've addressed that for now as well as the power issue. But it relates to the parking and traffic flow. Having experienced, had experience dealing with event planning and crowd control and that type of stuff, what sort of, within the parking area itself coming off the roadway, what sort of staffing do you intend to have there? I really, I heard you say you intend to have one-way traffic around.
Yes, sir.
But how do you, how do you ensure that? How do you enforce that?
With, what we propose right now is with, essentially with signage. There's two bridges out there. There's a big one and a small one. The small one will be closed and coned and marked that it's not an entrance or an exit, just to, first of all, to avoid any confusion from people coming off the highway. Second of all, is signage off the highway, just arrows and signage showing where the entrance to the maze is. As you come in that bridge, there'll have, there'll be a one-way arrow sign, right turn to direct people down that first row, and then pass that, there'll be do-not-enter signs to clue in people as to the flow.
So basically, you're saying it's self-park?
Well, the ticket booth is right adjacent to that also, so the employees that are in that ticket booth area are overseeing really what's going on with the bridge. And the numbers that I run, we don't see that, because it's open for anywhere from eight to 10 hours a day, we don't see any large amounts of people showing up at any one time. So I don't, at this time, I don't see it being an issue as opposed to traffic flow in the parking lot. I think essentially, we arrived on the size and amount of parking spaces in the parking lot as kind of a compromise, looking at the codes that are out there. What the parking lot is designed for right now is a sporting event, which goes by acreage of the sporting event. And being that a corn maze is, it's a fairly sizable corn maze, it's a fairly sizable area that we have to do this project, I believe that the parking itself is really overkill. But being that we have the space to do it, that's fine. We don't mind that at all. But I certainly don't envision ever 248 cars being out there. That just is beyond my imagination and to envision.
I would also say, in my opinion, it's a little naive to think that somebody doing tickets is going to also oversee traffic. If, you know, if you get those areas where it's busy and you have a problem, that parking person's probably not going to be able to deal with that.
No, I'm not saying one person is manning the event. No, we have a certain amount of employees that need to be there at all times. We have someone in the ticket booth, of course, but we have people at the entrances overseeing people going into the maze. Generally, the maze itself is actually two mazes, can be three mazes, depending on how the consultant cuts the thing. So each of those will have a person there manning the maze. So those aren't, but they're not necessarily tied there. So they can keep an idea, an eye on the traffic flow and that type of thing. And then we also have people that are stationed in the maze.
What is your staff, shift staffing going to be since this 10 to 10 window?
How many people?
Yeah. I assume you're going to run two shifts.
Yeah, yeah.
Or something similar to that.
That'll have to be worked out, yeah. Some of the, it depends, really, it depends on, we haven't set for sure how many days we're going to be open and we haven't set for sure the hours on those days. And part of that is going to come out on, as to the, to the conditions that we have on the maze. And in the, how it kind of works out is, we're expecting a certain, we would like a certain amount of people per year to come to the maze. And those numbers, I've looked at the maze, the Amazing Maze Maze, and I've also looked at economically what it, what it takes for us to run the maze every year financially. And in having those amount of people, we found that the more constriction that we have on traffic flow and parking, the more expensive it is for us to open it. So we have to open it less amount of days during the week. So essentially, we're working right now with how many days a week we're going to be open depending on the conditions that are put on the maze. So ideally, we'd like to be open five days a week, four to five days a week. But during the week, people aren't going to come to the maze in the morning time generally, although we can, schools and churches, that type of thing can be there during the week.
You kind of danced around my question and it has to do with staffing.
Yeah.
Somewhere in the document, I don't remember where it was, there was mention of staffing equivalent to one person per acre, equivalent to one person per acre. And this is a nine-acre site, as I recall. So that, does that mean you're going to have nine people onboard on any, whatever, whatever hours of operation?
Correct, yeah.
Around there?
Yeah.
Whether it's a six-hour shift or a 12-hour shift, or whether it's seven days a week or three days a week?
Correct.
There'll be at least nine people out there?
Yeah, yeah. I guess I didn't understand your question, but yeah. In our emergency operations plan, it states that we'll have one person per acre of maze that's operating to assist in any kind of evacuation or fire or anything that's going on. So, yeah, that, that's correct.
You mentioned emergency operations plan. As it relates to that, you've dealt with your planning, county, fire. Where is that plan going to reside? And I don't know if you have the answer to that or whether planning has the answer to that.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Where would that plan reside, other than onsite?
Oh, the emergency operations plan?
Yes. For example, if you have an ambulance emergency or a fire emergency, and you have a response from emergency units, where would that plan reside?
Well, the plan will be onsite at all times. Every employee will be issued a plan to read and keep. And the fire, of course, the fire department has a copy of that. And then also, in conjunction with the plan, put together what's called a quick reference checklist. And at all times, they, there'll be a manager on duty that's in charge of the operations of the maze. So it'll be one designated person that's in charge of implementing the plan if that need be.
From a, excuse me, from a public safety perspective, I know it's to one's advantage to have pre-planning, pre-staging awareness of a situation you might run into. May I suggest that that information also be in residence at the local police-slash-sheriff's department and also at the local fire department in Fillmore? I realize, county fire has a station, but you also have a city, a city station that may be called upon to respond, whether it be a lost child or whatever it might be.
Mm-hmm.
And it's important for those emergency personnel responding to have some familiarity with what it is they're responding to and the parameters within which they're going to be working.
Yes, sir.
And so I would ask that that be done.
Yes, sir. We'd be happy to do that.
As it relates to your emergency evacuation plan. There was also mention of an observation tower to be constructed. Where onsite is that, or has that been determined yet?
That has not been determined, and what we're proposing right now is scissors lift, like in the construction industry, yeah. So it would be mobile, but we would be, we'd be looking for the best spot to oversee everything when the maze, really, when the maze is up, we can see what the best spot will be.
Okay. And you're still working on the issue of parking? You're still working on, you're working with an organization to deal with that? My concern also would be dust and maintenance through that three-month window of operation and maintenance of the parking structure, the marking, if you will.
Okay.
That'll, I assume, will be maintained and proposed and worked out?
As part of the traffic plan.
In the process of this traffic parking plan.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Dugus, any questions about water trucks?
I was just wondering, is there a condition that you keep the parking dust down with a water truck?
I believe there is. It rings a bell, but certainly, we, even if there isn't, that's what we propose to do just for good business sense. Nobody wants to walk around in the dust.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time?
I just have a couple. Obviously, you're going to have children and elderly people coming out there. I don't see anything in the plans as far as a rest area, chairs, a table for them to sit down. Did you have any intention of doing that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any idea where that would be on your plan?
Right at the ticket booth area by the porta pottings, the chemical toilets.
Okay, great. I just wanted to see that. And talk about the generators. Okay. Are there any of the conditions in this document that you would like to bring up this time for discussion? I know I've said several to the staff. We'll talk about those. Is there any other specific condition you'd like to discuss?
In regards to the...
You need a conductor. Thank you. Please say your name and address, sir.
Hello. My name's Richard Barron from Barron Brothers Nursery.
Welcome.
We brought up a, you know, we had our attorney review the documents and there was this on the whole harmless, and I think it went around the room. The only concern is, how is, you know, if somebody sues the county, what is the process? You know, because the concern of our attorney is that they agreed to a settlement without, we're getting a word on that. And based the way it's worded, you know, we just have to pay it. We understand, we will fight it and all that. We want the chance to do that. So that was it, so.
Okay, thank you then. But we'll have, this county council respond to that for us, what the process would be, Robert.
Do you want the answer now?
Yeah, right now.
Okay. The provision that we're talking about right now is on page eight of the condition of use permit, conditions, condition compliance, financial requirement, limitations, condition number nine, subdivision E, sub-paragraphs one and two. Let me just read that. As a condition of issuance and use of this permit, including adjustment, modification, or renewal of the permit, the party agrees to, number one, defend at the party's sole expense any action brought against the county by a third party challenging either its decision to issue the permit or the manner in which the county is interpreting or enforcing the conditions of the permit. Looking at some of the wording that was provided by the applicant here, there's no problem with subdivision, sub-paragraph one. The beginning part of sub-paragraph E has a provision there, so long as the county, they wanted some language to be added with regards to so long as the county reasonably and timely tenders the defense. That is usually done immediately upon service of a complaint filed against the county. Given this provision, as soon as county council is made aware of it, after it is properly served upon the county, then a tender is given to the applicant and the applicant's representative as indicated by these conditions. Sub-paragraph two says indemnify the county against any settlements, awards, judgments, including attorney's fees arising out of or resulting from any such action. That is a provision that obviously is about indemnity. How that works is that the county works closely with the applicant's attorney to cooperate with them in the defense of the county. In this case, the financing and the initial legal responsibility for the litigation falls upon the applicant's counsel, but cooperation is normally done, and we're in the process of doing that now with some, already some decisions. And so that cooperation is very strong. And as a matter of fact, there is a lot of relationship and communication between county council as well as the applicant about who would be the best person to represent the applicant as well as the county in this action. So not only are we concerned about cooperation from a factual standpoint, but how good is that legal defense going to be? The county council is very concerned about the quality of counsel and the quality of representation, so all of that goes into it and there's a lot of... So all of that goes into it and there's a lot of contact and communication that goes on there. There is nothing that is done, that is done unilaterally by the county without the knowledge of the applicant in this case. So rest assured that if, from a practical standpoint, although it doesn't go into the great details of that, that, that goes on and it is going on in other cases involving that unfortunately with, with lawsuits being the, what they are. Also, I'd like to mention that this section in condition number nine is a board instituted indemnification and hold harmless policy. Cannot be changed without the board's actual approval of it. So understanding some of the concerns that, uh, the Baron Brothers have had over this, you properly asked the question and, and that is the answer about how it works. So I hope that that answers the questions of all concern here.
Uh, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for appearing. Appreciate that. Okay, um... I don't have any further questions. Uh, any other commissioners?
I have one further question. Um, as it relates to the app, the application, um, there was, uh... There was a statement that basically said that the annual plan of the maze would be submitted to planning every year annually.
Correct.
There was also in, in, in the, the application process, uh, comment about a contact person and problem resolution and liaison between the applicant and planning when those citizen complaints might come up. I would ask that annually and that, uh, that the contact person, um, would be made known to planning. I would ask that that be done on an annual basis and not just because, as we know, people come and go and things change. And if we're going to do an annual renewal of the maze every year and submit it to planning, that that contact person also be included in that notification-
Yes, sir.
-as, as those personnel might change.
Sure, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Um, do we, so are we changing, uh, nine E at all? Are we recommending?
Are we recommending that the board change nine E at all?
No.
Or has that been resolved?
Well, the planning commission can't-
We can't-
Just answer, the planning commission cannot unilaterally change. This is a board instituted condition.
Okay, so, so it's agreed upon that, um, that this is the language that will, um, be approved then?
I believe so.
Yeah, I, based on his explanation, I feel comfortable with what we have.
Okay, I wanted to make sure again. Thank you.
No, I was gonna advise him that if he didn't like it, then his job was to appeal that language to the board of supervisors and... I don't think that's a good idea. Okay. All right, um, do you have anything else, sir?
I did have a little confusion on, uh, this is the first time I've been through this process, but in the beginning of, uh, this, you were talking about language that essentially didn't apply to our project.
Correct.
Is that, uh, what is the process there? Does that, are you looking at removing that or?
Uh, that's, that's one of the powers of the commission is setting the conditions, except for the ones that are directed by the board of supervisors.
Okay.
So we can modify your conditional use permit, uh, so it tailor to what you're doing.
Yes, sir.
And you find, as people found out here, that we ask questions and want different conditions or eliminate conditions. So like I said in the beginning, it's our policy, if you're a good neighbor, you're a good citizen and your conditional use permit, we have no complaints, there's no reason for you to come back in front of us, go through this process. We hand over a ministerial ability to the director and she can make that determination. Uh, at that time, if she doesn't feel you're appropriate, then you come back. If she feel, staff feel that you've been a good neighbor, then there's no reason for you, she can just handle it on that level. Um, so that's, that's the kind of things we can do up here.
Commissioner Duke?
Well, um, I'd just like to direct your attention to page twenty-five of twenty-six, where he's talking about, for example, the door swings, all exit doors shall swing in the direction of travel. I mean, these are like stock- -things and, and, um-
Right.
So, so in, in this case, obviously, you're not gonna have swing doors.
It's hard to make the corn swing.
But you're still gonna need, well, you're still gonna need exit signs.
Correct, yeah.
But not above doors.
Not above doors.
So I'm just saying, we just wanna adjust that to that which makes sense to your project.
Yes, sir.
And there's another reason for that. If we don't, then there can be, uh, implied consent that you can put a structure there.
Well, sure, absolutely.
And because, well, you put that condition in there, so I mean, you must've thought I was gonna build a building.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, we're back here and talking to county council and-
Yes, sir.
And, uh, did we lead you down the primrose path as far as all of that? The same with the food vendors. The fact that, well, if you go out and get the environmental help, that says, I could have food vendors. Well, no, that's not what's been represented. If that's gonna happen, we'd like for you to talk to staff and go through that process.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so again, it's here to protect you, but also to protect the county at the same time and the public, which is a big thing.
Thank you.
Okay? Any other questions?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, anybody in opposition of the project? Okay, hearing none. Um, is there any response from staff?
Chair, uh, Westner, I'd like to respond to the, to the additional questions and the items that you raised to begin. Um, starting on, well, Commissioner Duke has raised an issue on dust and whether we had a condition for that and that condition is condition fifty-nine, let's see, the APCD condition. Commissioner Rodriguez raised an issue on an annual review of the, um, contact person, but the conditions actually call for a new contact person to be provided to us within ten days. So if, if a contact person is changing, we wanna know in ten days. So I think that that's even a more restrictive language than that. Um, the condition about the ten year plus the ten year jumper. I think in discussing with Pat, it wasn't, you know, it's a corn maze. It's nothing that we're all that familiar with, so we don't feel comfortable ten years and ten years. But what the condition says is, we'll give you ten years and then condition two B says, if the permitty desires a time extension, then they'll come in and we'll discuss how long it's going to be and what level of modification that's going to be. And I think we felt comfortable with that being the language.
Well, just so you know, my purpose was, you guys know what's going on for, to set this all back for you and as well as the applicant, uh, to give you the latitude. That was, I think, our whole purpose. You're the professionals here, you know what you're doing. Uh, if you feel that you don't wanna make the decision, you always have the opportunity to bring it back to us. So I wanted to give you more freedom, is all I'm saying.
Very good.
Okay.
Um, on the issue of the bonding, in typical, in these kind of cases where there's really no permanent structures, we don't require bonding. It gets a little bit more interesting when we talk about these added conditions and you, and you really read through them and obviously saw a kind of a, a little bit of inconsistency with the system. And, and the reason that is, is we get conditions from, from these agencies. And you'll not just see that with the fire department and the environmental health department, but you'll also see, I mean, there's grading conditions in there. If you're gonna grade over a thousand cubic yards, well, obviously, we know we're not going to, so that condition wouldn't apply. What is difficult is these, um, agencies give us these conditions and, and because it's easier for them to say, here's all of our conditions, they may or may not apply, we want them in the permit, because they don't perhaps have the time or the staff to cull through each individual one to see which conditions apply. So these twenty-eight conditions from the fire department are pretty standard, twenty-eight conditions. And the planning department, um, does not rewrite their conditions. If we have one that's, that absolutely doesn't fit with the project, we'll call them. But, um, we don't, we don't take out their conditions. That's what they told us that they wanted in here. Now, whether they apply or not, when we go to the fire department, the environmental health, the grading department and said, okay, they're ready to pull their zoning clearance, have they met your conditions, the ones that are applicable to this project, they give us a memo that says yes or no. And that's, that's the way we do it. Although we are looking at that system and we are going to visit these agencies one by one to say, can we not write conditions per the project and not put these, you know, because then we get twenty-six pages of conditions where perhaps we only needed twelve. So that, that is the, uh, how those come to be. And the, the issue with the combustible construction on the fire department, it could be that that is not a scissor lift that they build for that tower, that they actually do build out of wood combustible construction. So that condition would apply if they did build anything out of wood. So I think those are the, the questions that you've asked.
Commissioner Bartel?
This is the other issue. Every time you plow down a field, you're grading. Every time you level a field, you're grading. So under the strict permitting of a grading permit, in fact, grading is occurring. And my concern is that we're, we're doing a CUP and because it's a CUP, we've created this sort of netherworld. And I'm sure that the relationship between public works and, and planning is fine, but there will come a day very soon when doing basic standard procedure field prep is grading. Just to level a field, you're moving a lot of earth. So I don't want this project, it's a maze, it's, we're growing corn, but also there was building of the pad to have the parking, which was grading. So was a grading permit let for that?
Well, there's a condition to say, prior to the issuance of the zoning clearance, you need to visit the, the grading department to see if a grading, uh, permit is necessary. So that's one of the conditions-
And what was their response?
Well, there, there hasn't been a permit issued yet, so.
Okay, but the grading, the parking area is already there. Maybe, is, is the public hearing still open?
Yes, I have a-
Yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, I don't want people to get stuck. The fire department's gonna say, where's your all-weather road?
Please state your name so we can-
Yeah, Richard Baron, Baron Brothers Nursery.
Yeah.
Um, the property was flooded, uh, and there was, uh, approximately forty thousand tons or whatever of material that covered our fields there of citrus. And we cleaned that up. First, we pulled it out, we went through all the, um, uh, looking for relief to deal with this. When they finally found that, well, you're in a, that this, that we had to do it on our own, we moved the soil and created the raised area. So in the future, this is our, a nursery out there, that in the future, we have a, a area that is higher than, um, the road and hopefully that area wouldn't flood, the, the raised area, which we're gonna use for the parking. But it's all done in agricultural dealing with, uh, that. But we did, um, get all that, the, the, the compaction and everything that we did certified. We had that all, you know, by a engineer. So I'm, I'm wondering, do we have, did we get a pull-up permit? For a deal? Yeah, but we were told that because it was agriculture, that we really weren't creating, uh, you know, doing agr- we were moving it because you couldn't even farm it. It was just the silt and everything that came there. We had to bring it back down to the level of the farm. You couldn't even drive on the material, so.
Right, my, my, I, I also do agriculture. I understand that part, um, about two blocks from where you are. So the concern I have is by having a conditional use permit and being in this process and, uh, the planning director hit it on the head, we are very aware that we've got potentially some conflicting policies and procedures within the county structure. I don't want you all to get caught in that. As we think about this entitlement and ten years down the road, all of a sudden, I hear that it took you two and a half years to get a zoning clearance for a maze. And which, if you wanna talk to Craig Underwood, we can, you should talk to Craig Underwood about this process. So just that, so this is as much an internal discussion and I appreciate the fact that your timing was perfect. You were recovering ag land before we ever started to talk about this entitlement. That's, that gets me where I need to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Any other questions? Anything else, sir?
I have one more point on these, uh, on these extra conditions. There really isn't any, um, perceived notion that they would be able to do food vending or they would be able to construct with these conditions in there. And the reason, um, for that is because it's in condition one, the permitted land uses. And so we always go to the permitted land uses and condition one B, and this is where we really try to be clear on permits. The permit is granted only for the structures, parking area, landscape, roadways, driveways, as shown on the site plans, and then it goes to the exhibit. So really, no matter what the conditions say in back, we always go to this to say, what exactly were they permitted to do? If they wanted to come in next year, the year after, and do food or popcorn vending or whatever, we would decide what level of modification that was. Okay.
Okay. Uh, just, just so everybody's aware, I do that because we've discussed this many times when we get the standard package. There's clever people like myself and Robert out there that will begin to interpret these things two years from now. Correct, council? And then that creates a headache for you guys. And so I just wanna make sure. The classic problem is in Moore Park, we approved a car wash. Staff didn't catch there was a gasoline tank on the plants. Then that actually implies you can have, sell gasoline. And guess what? They won't be able to sell gasoline. So, uh, again, I just, not so much for the applicant here today. This is an internal thing that, as Commissioner Bartel has probably said, we get ourselves two years from now going, oops, kind of thing. And, uh, we're getting much better at it. And, uh, that's my whole purpose of all of this today was, uh, trying to tell us. And I understand getting public works and Caltrans and everybody else on the same page, sometimes a little difficult, so. Uh, that was my little exercise for the day. Okay, is there anything else? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and commission deliberation. Ladies and gentlemen?
If I may, move the recommended action.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have an act, uh, motion and a second for the recommended actions found on page six of seven as the report. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. And don't forget Toto. Win Toto, don't get Toto lost on the cornfield. Okay, item number six, discussion report by the planning director on board actions and other matters.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I don't have, uh, let's see, I have a few housekeeping things. One, a, a couple of pieces of good news. Not too long ago, the county received an, an award, an, an American Planning Association award for the Central Coast, an award of excellence for a wetlands project that we did. We did a permitting guide and a guide to native and invasive stream side plants. And it, it's been a wonderful guide on how do you kind of wrangle in all the federal, the state and the local agencies and how to do this wetlands protection. And we've shared it with all of the cities and jurisdictions and it's, uh, people have been really pleased with it. So we've submitted that for a state APA award and we have gotten an award of merit from the state and they've asked us to submit it nationally. So, um, I'd really like to, to give kudos to Lorraine Rubin and, and staff that helped her with that and she's in Nancy Settle's group and she just did an amazing job on that. And we've gotten a lot of mileage out of that document. Another good piece of news is that we have a manager finally in the enforcement section to replace the irreplaceable Todd Coller and it is going to be Peter Kaiser. And I'm not sure if you know Peter Kaiser, but he is, um, right now, he works in the integrated waste management. They've changed their name yet again, integrated waste management. He is a manager down there. Mr. Kaiser has his, uh, master's degree in planning from Cal Poly Pomona. He has been with the county, I believe, since nineteen ninety and he, um, was a police officer for thirteen years with, I think, the city of Anaheim. So I think he is going to be a perfect fit. He is going to come to work for us on September the tenth and I couldn't be more exciting as that's a job that I'm doing right now. So I'm happy to have him. Um, and on the hiring front, we are, uh, going to put out, uh, we're three planners short right now. So we're going out for, to hire for these positions. So hopefully, we can lighten the caseload of some of these planners like Haylen Alpert. It was nice that he was before you this morning. Haylen came to us from the East Coast. So he, um, he has a, a lot of experience, uh, on East Coast planning and is getting used to SEQA. And I think he's done just a fabulous job for us. On the biosolids project, you, uh, your, your commission heard that on June twenty-eighth and there was a unanimous vote on that. It went to the board, um, and the board decided that they wanted to take a little bit more time with it. It looked like it, it has the, the three votes, but they decided to take more time with it and do a little, um, research on alternatives, alternative site and alternative analysis. That's nothing that the planning, uh, department was going to be involved with. It was simply a decision by a supervisor that they wanted to take more time with that. So it will be heard again on September the eleventh. It was, I think, a six hour hearing for you. We thought we really negotiated that out and, uh, and we, we scheduled it for a one hour hearing at the board. It ended up being, what, it was at four? So, uh, that will be heard again though. And then also on that same date, we had, um, uh, Shelley Sussman did our oak woodlands, uh, project and that was approved. Five, five oh, yeah. So that was a, that's a good project. And that, that project, that plan enables, um, the, the county has to have that plan and enable to have people to get grant money. There's nineteen million dollars in grant money and the county had to adopt an oak woodlands mitigation plan in order to, uh, allow the county and anybody else to have access to that grant money. So that was, that plan was prepared with funds in our oak tree mitigation plan. So that was actually a good use for that funds, which will now enable us and, and other people to get, to get more money. What's, as far as what's coming before you, I think October eleventh, you have the LCA contracts and I think that's the only thing that's on the agenda, but I expect more things to show up on the agenda within the next, uh, week or two. The last thing that I have is the, the California- Um, the last thing that I have is the, the California County Planning Commissioners Association, um, has having their state conference, and the conference is going to be October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh in South Lake Tahoe, and I know Commissioner Molitor is planning on attending, and just for budgetary reasons, I didn't know if anybody else was planning on attending, or if you just wanted to email me that and let me know, does, everybody's on the mailing list for this, is that?
Right.
Yes, okay, okay, so if you want to attend, you, you just send me an email, and I just need to make sure that I have the budget for everything.
Okay.
And that's all I have, do you have anything for me?
Anything from the commissioners? Hearing none, you, uh, please, uh, thank Mr. Alpert for us, I thought he did an excellent job, uh, particularly for his first time, I knew he was a little concerned, you probably have all warned him.
[laughing].
So, but, uh, and also informing, since he got complimented by the, the chair, that he has now buy donuts for staff.
Okay, good deal.
Okay, um, anything else from county council?
Yes.
All right, then it's my pleasure to adjourn this meeting.